Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first agenda item is to approve your agenda, and it is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Second item is to receive the General Manager's report. We do have a few items to share with you. The first item in the General Manager's report is to recognize our hospitality hero. In celebration of the U.S. Travel Association's annual National Travel and Tourism Week, the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority Host Committee honors an exemplary employee every year who demonstrates superior customer service to our visitors. This year, that exemplary employee, named a hospitality hero, was none other than Keolis Bus Operator Rakim Cox. Rakim has shown outstanding customer service to many tourists who ride the deuce. During a surprise presentation last month, Rakim was honored with the Hospitality Hero Award by LVCBA Representative Kelly Luke's. We'd like to invite Rakim up today for a picture with our board and congratulate him.
I just want to say thank you to all the people that supported me. Bill, Francis, Kevin, ATU, all the people that support me every day. And really, I want to thank the people of Las Vegas that I deal with every day. Some of the things that they go through, I'm glad I'm able to make it better for them to enjoy their ride. The people that come here from other cities and other countries. I just wanted to say thank you for just being the people that you are. And not only am I, I recognize the struggle, but I'm also a part of the struggle and to make things better. So, thank you.
I'd like to give you a legislative update on an item that's very important to us. Last Friday, Governor Sandoval signed and approved AB 191. AB 191 will combine the two ballot questions that were formerly required by AB 413 into one ballot question. Now each county, except for Washoe, will have a ballot question asking if they wish to index the fuel tax to inflation, or in our case, continue the concept of tying motor vehicle fuel tax to inflation. The indexed state portion of the tax will go to the State Highway Trust Fund and will have, and will be required to be spent in the county where the revenue was collected. The local and federal portions of indexing will be deposited into each county's regional street and highway fund. All revenue from fuel revenue indexing must be spent on roadway projects. AB 191 simplifies the fuel revenue indexing ballot initiative by combining those two ballot questions into one that'll hopefully avoid voter confusion in the November 2016 election. Any questions on that?
Comments or questions on that from the board? Commissioner G.
Just to clarify, so our ballot question will be written, "Do you wish to continue?"
Continue the concept of tying motor vehicle fuel tax.
Makes it much easier in the long run, so, okay. I'm glad you guys got that passed. I think it helps both the state, because the highway fund needs some additional revenue as well, but because it then generates it locally, I think that needs to be part of the messaging, that the return on the dollar still comes back to the entity where it was generated. And then maybe we can help facilitate with NDOT trying to bring back in the state highways, and maybe you guys take the Beltway or something. We gotta have that conversation, because we might have some revenue there. Just some thoughts.
Councilwoman, and then Mayor Lee.
Obviously, this is great news, and we obviously have to develop our strategy going forward to let the message get out to the folks. But there was another piece of information that I found out that benefits our streets as well this week. I happened to register my car with the DMV, and I had an opportunity to check a box to donate money to Complete Streets. And I thought that was wonderful, to be able to give back to our community and to our streets in another way, so kudos to the Department of Transportation and DMV.
Mayor Lee.
Just curious, it was a great session for a lot of people, but is that the only bill that you guys were monitoring that helped out in transportation? Or was there other bills that you were able to benefit from?
There's a litany of bills that we testified on or participated in, had interest in. This was the one that had the most fiscal impact and was the item of most priority and most interest to us. But we can come back to you with a review of the bills that we participated in. For the most part, we felt like it was a successful session for us.
And the reason I ask is sometimes with my municipal government role, I only worry about what happens to the corporate boundaries of North Las Vegas. But some of that stuff actually that you passed helps me, and I don't recognize that was given to me. So could you do a better legislative update that might be able to benefit me a little bit from my information?
Yeah.
Thank you, Angela, appreciate it.
I think we should then also see ones we had to kill, not just those that we passed. And you know which one I'm possibly talking about, which was still bothersome to me, that there was that attempt. But I do think we need to know which ones were bothersome to us. Maybe we'll do it that way. No kind of attempt or something.
We'll craft some conversation.
Very good.
Okay, so that means in 16 months from now, we'll be having a vote that will consider the future of transit and transportation in Southern Nevada. As you know, today is Mayor Tobler's last board meeting with the RTC, and we'd like to share this video with you, recognizing his efforts. Quiet but extremely effective, unassuming but bold, these are the words that best describe Mayor Tobler. For the last 10 years, I had the pleasure of working with Mayor Tobler, who I found to be one of the most inspirational and effective leaders. Throughout his term on the RTC board, he represented his community by tackling tough issues and providing direction based on facts and data. He worked to achieve what he believed was in the best interest of Boulder City, as well as all of Southern Nevada. His leadership has helped transform the RTC, and he will truly be missed.
And I'm excited to hear that we don't want to see the rural communities get cut off, but in reality, I mean, we've adopted a budget. So when it comes down to finding dollars, where are we gonna look, honestly, Councilman? We're gonna look at the lower rider ships. Yet the need's still there. And so, you know, I just want to point that out, that we knew this going into with the Budget Committee and what was recommended to this board, that this was gonna be a challenge. So anything that we adopt, apart from that budget, is gonna be a fight for us rural communities to maintain our service. We've already made a lot of adjustments to our routes out in Boulder City and to some of these rural areas. And I want to remind everybody that there's important areas out there, too, the Veterans Home. These are things that we're trying to maintain and protect. So, you know, remember what we adopted in the budget, and whatever happens in the future, to say that, you know, we gotta figure out a way, that's right, we do need to figure out a way, but it's gonna take money from somewhere else.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're here today celebrating, but anyone that's been involved with this project knows that there have been a lot of obstacles over the last couple of years. And this project has had a champion in Mayor Tobler, who has, in a very, very humble way, refused to let anything slow this down. He has been quietly at every meeting that decisions needed to be made. He is finishing his term as mayor and finishing his term as an RTC Commissioner. But if you talk about the epitome of a public servant, it's been my honor to serve with Mayor Roger Tobler. He's been a great asset to the entire Southern Nevada community.
Well, I was thinking back, and you know, I moved to Boulder City with my family back in 1978. We came from Las Vegas, where we lived all our lives. And there was a Mayor Tobler in Boulder City. It was Roger's father, he was a good mayor. And now, after all these years, we're saying farewell, I guess, as mayor to Roger, who's probably the best mayor that Boulder City has ever had. And I understand there's a successor to Roger, whose name is Woodbury. I hope he'll become a member of the RTC and follow in Roger's footsteps. But he knows he has a very tough act to follow. Whether it's been the wonderful work on the I-11 bypass that Roger was relentless about for years, or so many other great projects for the city and for the entire community, made a real difference, Roger. I want you to know, though, that there is a life after politics. Now, you may have withdrawal symptoms, you may have to go through a 12-step recovery program, but you'll survive. And I want you to know that we're so grateful for your work on behalf of the people of Boulder City and the people of Southern Nevada. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Tobler. I just want to say how much I have appreciated working with you. For the past 25 years, I've worked in the public sector, and you are the best elective official I've ever worked with. On behalf of the citizens of Boulder City, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for your 12 years of service to this community. Your support on quality projects, such as the Complete Street Project of Nevada Way, has helped us improve the quality of life for all the residents that call Boulder City home. Thanks again.
I'd like to personally thank Mayor Roger Tobler for his time and service on the RTC. We are so grateful, and indeed, he was an integral part in making sure that we have the beautification project, that have brought many, many guests and residents that have enjoyed the beautification project in the Historic District. Because of this project, we have definitely recognized larger numbers into our area to enjoy the Historic District, the quaint charm of Boulder City. Thank you, Mayor Roger Tobler. We truly appreciate your time, your service, and your talents.
Thank you, Mayor Tobler, for your service with the RTC. You will be missed, but if you're talking in the background, we will hunt you down and talk to you whenever it is in the new community activities before, as we move forward. We'd like to take a moment to present Mayor Tobler with a small, I guess, why Allison, who I know is with us today, with a small token of our appreciation as we bid a farewell. Thank you, Mayor Tobler, for your time and thanks.
Wow. I guess I just want to say, sorry, I shouldn't be emotional, but I am. As, excuse me, as Roger's been on these commissions and been in public office for the last 12 years, at home, I can, I can say to you that he really has put the interests of those that he serves ahead of everything. He hasn't done it for any political reasoning, or to get ahead himself, or any special interest groups. It's just been for the people that he serves, because he loves our little town, and he loves where we live, and he's done it so we could have a better quality of life. And I can, I can tell you that really is why he has served, and why we've been, as a family, supportive of him. And we really respect him and love him for that. And so, anyway, thank you.
I've given up trying to top my wife. I do want to point out, I have two daughters out there in the audience, and anytime I can embarrass them, I love doing that. So Alyssa is our youngest. Go ahead and stand up, Alyssa. And Chase is gonna be a senior in high school next year, so. They're the two that we have left home, and I could never have done this without having the support of a great wife, to be able to get involved in the way that we have been in the community. So, anyway, I just want to thank everybody. This has been a great board to be on. You know, I was very nervous when I first got on this board, and I really felt like I didn't have a lot to offer. We had a lot of other mayors and other people that have been involved for many years, but I never, no one ever made me feel that way, and it's been a great learning process. And the staff, Tina, you and your staff have been wonderful. Fred and Mike, working with you guys on the I-11, it's been great. You guys do a great job. And meeting after meeting, as I, and since I'm leaving, I'm gonna say this, but as I sit up here and listen to things, sometimes not always nice, and sometimes derogatory that are said about staff and board members, you know, it just, it makes me cringe, because you guys are such wonderful people, and I have a lot of respect for you, and you work so hard. And you have a lot of things to balance, and a lot of interests to balance, out in the communities. And you do a great job in doing that, and you're not gonna make everybody happy, but I honestly believe that this is one board and one commission that really puts regional first. And we've talked about that. I think you guys do a great job and are a wonderful example for that. And I, hopefully, more commissions will see that, and see how working together really does, is the greater benefit. And so, anyway, I want to thank, and once again, I'll miss this, this will be one board that I miss. You know, as mayors, a lot of times, we get a lot of credit for things that maybe we played a role in, but we certainly weren't the, you know, the ones that did all the work. And you saw some pictures of the beautification process in Boulder City. And they keep giving me that credit, yet Scott Hanson was our architect of that. And, you know, I think I called him when I got angry calls, and we'd made sure it was funded, but I didn't build it. And, you know, the staff is the one that deserves that credit, and I believe that here at the RTC as well. I mean, we do set vision and policy, but you guys carry it out, and you do a great job. So thank you. And Chairman, thank you.
Mrs. Tobler, thank you for those heartfelt words. There's a contract being written to have you become a speechwriter for the RTC. And to the girls out there, I know you love your dad, but you should be as proud of him today as any time in your lives, because he has certainly set the bar high when it comes to public service. And again, Allison, those words were just right on. We thank you. Any other comments from the board? Mayor Lee.
We had an opportunity to say nice things about Roger in the last meeting, but, you know, I just wanted to reiterate, we, as mayors come together, we think regionally, and Roger comes to the table, and he's had so much experience. Carolyn and I, though we might have bigger communities, he's been through a lot more than we have, and we love him. Al's kind of new to the mayor's circle here, but Roger's been kind of our senior mayor, and we have really appreciated him. But, you know, Roger doesn't deserve a lot of accolades, but leadership is everything. You show me a Boy Scout troop, a church, county commission, anything that works, and I'll show you a leader. And, you know, just some of the stuff I'm thinking in my mind, I mean, the drone industry, you guys jumped on that, and you're a fly area. And in North Las Vegas, we can't, because our airport is in the center of town, you have to be five miles out. And you guys work very hard. And because of your efforts, we are going to be the drone capital of the world someday. I hope they manufacture them in our communities and fly them in your community, you know, but it would have not happened had we not had a mayor that jumped up there and pushed something down here to Southern Nevada, and all the VA facilities that you have out there that have happened since you've been mayor. I often say that North Las Vegas is the most patriotic city in Nevada, but I can tell you, there's a lot of patriotism that takes place out in Boulder City. The I-11, Roger, they ought to name a portion of that for you. You know, when we were at the legislature, working on it, you were up there, working side by side with me, the Chairman of Government Affairs, with the Transportation Committees. I mean, you really put the effort in to get that thing as a reality happening. I know Rudy can attest to that also. Bootleg Canyon, I'm a mountain biker, what a great place that is to go. We now recreate in Boulder City, where before, we just passed through it. So I'm a big proponent of Roger. I don't know if it's gonna be one of your daughters, or one of your sons, it's gonna be the mayor someday, but it looks like it's a public service family, and I'm looking forward to serving with another Tobler someday soon. But thank you so much for your leadership to the rest of the mayors in the Valley and to the board members here. Thank you, Roger.
I'm not gonna reiterate everything I said in the first meeting, but I was at a retirement party last night, and at the end of everyone's speech, they said, "I love you, man." Well, I can tell you that we love you, man. Thank you, thank you for everything.
And to give that presentation, I would like to share some, the person who's gonna give you the presentation, I'd like to tell you a little bit about. We have been, for about the past three months, in a recruitment process to find a Director of Planning. What we were looking for was a strong understanding of policy, but also the ability to communicate and establish rapport with our, with the community, with activists, with people who are interested in being partners with the RTC. Did a very thorough, we hired a headhunter, did a very thorough outreach to touch candidates who might be interested and might be potentially assets to the RTC. It was a competitive process, and in the very end, it was our very own Raymond Hess, who's behind me now, who will be promoted to Director of Planning. He has earned this position, he's been working very hard, and he proved to us, through the interview process, that he is the right person for this job. And he is now, as his first presentation as Director of Planning, going to give you a presentation on Southern Nevada Strong.
So I better not blow it, right? So I want to thank Mayor Tobler for teeing up kind of the need for regionalism. I think he mentioned that in his closing remarks. And we're gonna talk about Southern Nevada Strong, which is important to regionalism. So back in January, this commission gave us direction to transition Southern Nevada Strong from City of Henderson, which did a wonderful job in developing the regional plan, over to the Regional Transportation Commission. This transition has been ongoing for the last several months, and we're here now to share our strategy and talking points with you, so that you're comfortable with them. Once we have kind of a green light from you, we'd like to use these to engage our partners and stakeholders with this effort moving forward. So we'll start with just kind of an overview of what Southern Nevada Strong is. It's a collaborative effort that is led by the RTC, but consists of local governments, elected officials, business leaders, educators, community leaders, nonprofit organizations, and the public. We're working together to plan, build, and invest in complete communities throughout Southern Nevada that will provide access to quality education, affordable housing, employment opportunities, and viable transportation choices. Our actions are guided by the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan. So that plan is the first federally recognized document of its kind. It's based on three years of extensive community input, data gathering, and in-depth research, and was funded by a $3.5 million grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The plan is visionary and voluntary, and it provides a blueprint for improving economic competitiveness in education, investing in complete communities, and increasing transportation choices. These three tenants were applied to four opportunity sites, to prove that if the regional plan was applied to a specific area, that you could enjoy success in those areas. Those opportunity sites are Maryland Parkway, Boulder Highway, Downtown North Las Vegas, and the Las Vegas Medical District. There are numerous community benefits to Southern Nevada Strong, and we need for it to be successful. The Great Recession provided us with an opportunity to reflect on how we've grown and developed over the last 10 years, and we've realized now that we must make changes if we want to strengthen our community's ability to diversify its economy, improve the education system, develop a world-class transportation network, provide a mix of housing choices, support social services and healthcare, and enable neighborhoods to be safe, desirable, and engaged. This will require a spatial fix based on transit infrastructure and more flexible housing. In fact, a recent study concluded transit can be part of the solution in highly dense metropolitan areas by seamlessly connecting suburban areas to the more clustered core, enabling people to commute from greater distances, and help stretch labor and housing markets across the metro, thus creating more economically functional region. We're very fortunate that the development of the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan provided us with great resources. We have the regional plan itself, that's gonna help guide us in our implementation moving forward. It also provided a research library that supports the recommendations, a multitude of engaged citizens, passionate partners and volunteers, and a strong recognizable brand. We want to use these resources to perpetuate a positive feedback loop, so that we can engage the public and stakeholders, understand and connect priorities to action, build consensus, build and strengthen relationships, and collaborate and coordinate efforts, which all feed back into public support and stakeholder engagement. The RTC, through its Metropolitan Planning Organization, will act as the co-administrator of the Southern Nevada Strong effort. However, this does not mean that the RTC is responsible for implementing all 300 of the objectives identified in the plan. We believe it will be most productive if we enable and empower our partners and stakeholders and citizens to take ownership of the objectives that are important to them and proceed with implementation. We're guided by a volunteer steering committee, and we're working closely with our regional partners, residents, and business community. And we're gonna spearhead implementation by establishing ourselves as collective, efficient, and efficient leader in the community, engaging, educating, and moving Southern Nevadans to action, providing practical tools, trainings, and technical expertise, and increasing the alignment and availability of resources. So I'm very happy to report that there's a lot of momentum behind Southern Nevada Strong already. As you know, it was just recently adopted by the SNRPC in January and ratified by all of you at your local jurisdictions over the past several months, and we're already starting to see progress on implementation of the regional plan across the valley. I'm even more excited to share with you that that success is not isolated, it's spread across the valley. And some examples of that are, City of North Las Vegas received a Housing and Urban Development Grant for Choice Neighborhoods for $485,000. Clark County received an EPA Brownfields Grant for $500,000 to look at Maryland Parkway. This Board of Commissioners approved a contract for the NEPA analysis for Maryland Parkway just last month, so you're seeing some momentum behind some of those opportunity sites. Additionally, the City of Las Vegas just recently updated its Medical District Master Plan, which again ties directly into some of our opportunity sites. RTC staff is currently engaged with DOT and EPA staff on how to advance discussions regionally on transit-oriented developments. And then lastly, in your agenda today, Agenda Item Number 36 is Adoption of the Unified Planning Work Program. You'll note several different studies identified in that document that pertain directly to Southern Nevada Strong. Most notably, we have the Spencer-Greenway Utility Corridor Study, which will look at a bicycle pedestrian facility that parallels Maryland Parkway, as well as the visioning process for the Regional Transportation Plan. So the next 90 days, taking on a new role, the RTC plans to work on capacity building, communication, and administration. We will hold three, or two or three lunch and learn sessions with the RTC board, major stakeholders, to discuss the regional plan, as well as helpful tactics to move Southern Nevada Strong into the future. The SNS team is currently researching and working on how to implement and working on how to implement the recommendations made in the plan. We'll develop primary communication tools to hone the messaging of Southern Nevada Strong and finalize the communication plan. There was a request for proposals issued for administering the Southern Nevada Strong program management, and so we're going to get some consultant helps to provide us with some strategic direction on how to advance Southern Nevada Strong moving forward, and also to help us identify which resources we can bring onto the RTC team to help with this initiative moving forward. We'll convene the consortium committee to provide appropriate updates on what everyone's working on. And we want to meet one-on-one with our regional partners to introduce the RTC's implementation strategy and introduce ourselves as the new face of Southern Nevada Strong. We have a busy next 90 days, and we're excited to continue the wonderful work of the regional plan and see it come to fruition under the direction of the RTC.
Thank you. Comments? Questions for Director Hess?
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I mean, you're aboard, but welcome to the new position. And we're excited about what's going to be happening in the future. And truly, we're seeing progress with the grants coming in, and implementation of strategies and partnerships and outreach. I think this is truly an exciting and transformational time for Southern Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes your general manager's report. Your next agenda item is to receive the Nevada's President and Deputy Director's Report.
Thank you, Tina.
Rudy, if I could.
Chairman.
As a reminder, our first public comment period, which will be approaching soon, is limited to items that are on today's agenda. If you would like to speak, please, if you would, fill out a comment card available at the back of the room or through staff. Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to just offer my congratulations to Raymond. I think that there's no better person that could have been selected for that position. And I think that our Assistant Division Administrator from Federal Highway Administration, Paul Schneider, who's here today, would echo that. So congratulations to Raymond. Wanted to cover a little bit about some of the legislative issues that benefited NDOT. One of them was our bill passed that gave us the option of issuing bonds for up to a term of 30 years. Currently, it was 20 years. Gives us more options on funding of major projects. One that we were, was a kind of a last day change, as it could get frantic on the last day of the legislature. The GST or governmental services tax, back when the recession began, there was an increment added to what you pay for your motor vehicle registration to DMV. And that additional increment was going to the general fund. Through some last-minute passages of bills and the governor's approval, there was a change in where that money is going. So in the second year of the legislature, half of that increment will go to the state highway fund, and then thereafter, all of that additional increment will go. What that means is, in the second year of the next biennium, we'll get about 30 million, 31 million more to the state highway fund. And then after that, with no change in the legislation, that would be about 63 million a year going to the state highway fund. So a substantial amount of money that would go to the state highway fund for projects. The other thing that was significant was Senator, State Senator Menando gave us one of his bill draft placeholders, and we used it for getting stormwater Clean Water Act compliance enforcement authority. So when there's polluted water discharging onto our highways or streets, we now have enforcement authority to deal with those property owners. And we understand that there has to be an awareness campaign as well. So people that maybe are not aware of their responsibilities, for instance, in a parking lot, and there's an oil spill from a car in a parking lot, their responsibility to clean that up and not just let it wash out into our drainage system. Because our goal is to prevent water pollution that gets into Lake Mead or other lakes and streams that provide eventually drinking water, and it's important for environmental considerations. All in all, NDOT was treated very well. Our budget got approved. We had a significant budget amendment for the Clean Water Act compliance issue. So additional maintenance positions, additional folks to do the mapping, and public outreach, and communicate with property owners on the stormwater program and pollution prevention in terms of water quality. So I was really pleased with the outcome, approval of our budget. And the other things to note, recently, our Transportation Board awarded the US 95 widening project in the Northwest. So there's been some construction going on on US 95 and Northwest up to Durango Road. The next phase of the 95 widening projects is construction of two major ramps at the interchange with the 215 Beltway. So that was awarded to Las Vegas pavement, and construction will start in about 30 days. Last night, we had our Project Neon Public Information Meeting, well attended by the public. And then we are, Commissioner June Kiliani had asked for us to have a presentation of the Clark County Board of Commissioners, so that's set up for June 16th. We also submitted a Tiger Grant application for some improvements near Apex Industrial Center on US 93 and that I-15 area. Hopefully, that will rank highly and be selected by the USDOT. The House, on the federal funding side, the House is looking at, they approved a budget for the transportation for the next federal fiscal year. There's, the current surface transportation bill was extended for two more months. That's because that's as much money as they have in the Highway Trust Fund, so they have money coming into that fund. But they have to figure out a way to add more money to that fund, either through general fund bailouts is what they've been doing, or what they've been talking for the future, which is corporate tax reform. So we'll be watching with anticipation of the next long-term highway bill, surface transportation bill. Now recently, there was that earthquake north of Las Vegas that caused us to have some concerns with the bridge there at the spaghetti bowl from US 95 to I-15 South. We investigated it. The bridges were in good condition. What happened was there was an expansion joint material, a rubber material that split apart in the joint. So it wasn't structurally an issue, but we will have a contract to replace that joint seal in the bridge. And recently, it was reported that our bridges are number one in the nation as far as the state DOTs and bridge condition. So we're pleased with that ranking. We know that there's a few bridges to address. Maybe they're not wide enough, or they're an older design that we need to replace. But it's good news that we didn't suffer any damage from that earthquake that occurred recently. Last but not least, I wanted to mention that I did see that news article about the teenager that was struck, pedestrian that was struck on Boulder Highway near Russell Road, between Russell and Gibson. So I asked our safety staff to look into that location to see if there's some safety improvements needed. There's about a half dozen safety improvements that are on their way in design right now for Boulder Highway, various locations in Henderson all the way into Las Vegas. And that's one that we'll add to our list to look at and investigate to see if a flasher is needed for that mid-block crossing. That concludes my director's report, and willing to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Gee.
Thank you. Good news on the bridges. I do think we've maintained them pretty well, as well as you can. And I was telling Deborah that, I was at a student scholarship meeting with 3,000 students from Clark County on the fifth floor of the Venetian, and you could feel it move. So although when I went downstairs, nobody on the first floor had felt it, which was kind of interesting. I did have one question, and I think with the regionalization in the Southern Nevada Strong, all the partners are going to be brought to the table, including NDOT, and so that we're communicating across lines. Because sometimes, I don't think jurisdictions or NDOT always know what projects are going in. So when, as streets are being torn up or lanes are narrowed, we need just a better coordination of that. But one thing I would ask you to look into, if you wouldn't mind, is when a local government public works does their bid, and they say, "No, you can only close these two lanes," sometimes NDOT, when you override that and let the contractor narrow it even further. And if we've let the bid with that understanding, I would hope that we would not undermine that part of it. And that happens sometimes. I would say Boulder Highway would be an example, if you wanted to look at that. Because what we're trying to do on our policies, where there's three lanes, two lanes are always open. You just, would just create too much grid lock otherwise. So that would just be one thing that we look at in the communication side. I'm glad the government services taxes, because when, I think it was Goldwater that did the initial one, that was just for general fund, and that's where we put that at that time. But I do think it makes sense to start diverting it into the highway fund, because the money just hasn't been generated in order to be able to keep that sustained. So I think that that was a good win in the long run legislatively. So, thank you.
Other comments? Rudy, one question on the wastewater issue. Have you identified, or you're in the process of hiring that team?
Yes. What the legislature approved in our budget was 42 new positions, and it's a combination of engineering positions, maintenance positions, people that were going to be doing the administration of the program, so environmental positions. We're in the process of hiring first a new senior position, a deputy director position at the department, who will start filling the other 41 positions throughout the organization. Many of them are in the districts to deal with the day-to-day maintenance of the, whether it's pipes, or culverts, or ditches, or the devices that we put out there to control water quality and improve water quality.
Very good. I would just ask that as that team develops, it's not just our parking lots and roads to tie into the wastewater facilities down here, regional flood control. I'd encourage them to be part of the initial dialogue, so not only to avoid any kind of redundancies, but to really capture the best way to go after this. This is a quiet issue that could very well be a major issue in the very near future as far as this whole water quality and how we treat that water before it gets to Lake Mead.
Mr. Chairman, you've hit it right on the head. There is an effective group down here that's already addressing it, and we're looking at just teaming up with that in the Las Vegas area, because it makes more sense and more economical approach.
Chairman members of the commission, your next agenda item, Agenda Item Number Four, is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. No cards, but we have Mr. Mendoza.
Good morning. Good morning. I was just looking at item number 42 regarding some batteries. And our question to the commissioners or RTC staff is, are these batteries for the street car or the new hybrid vehicles, buses that just got purchased? I know there has been this warranty issue behind that, I've been told. And also, the street cars cost like 1. some, $1 million, you know, we're just wondering, the cost of almost $2 million bucks for batteries. That's a question we have.
So the question is, where are the monies going to?
Yes, for which vehicles, the street cars or the new hybrid?
Thank you. Can we answer that one?
Yes, that's going for the street cars.
It is for the street cars? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during this period for public comment? Seeing and hearing no one will close this portion of public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, your next up is consent agenda, which is comprised of items five through 48, and may be taken in one motion.
A motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Item number 49 will be introduced by Deputy General Manager MJ Maynard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, item 49 is to receive a presentation for the review of certain matters related to the July 1, 2015 increase in fuel taxes made under the provisions of Section 373.0663 of Nevada Revice Statutes in Chapter 4.07 of the Clark County Code. There is no fiscal impact to the fiscal year 2015 budget associated with this item. The additional revenues that will be generated in fiscal year 2016 by the indexed fuel tax are programmed in the fiscal year 2016 budget. NRS 373.067 requires that before each statutorily required annual inflationary adjustment is made to the fuel tax rates of Clark County, the RTC review, at a public meeting, the amount of the upcoming adjustments, the history of past adjustments, and what has been done with the revenue collected. This agenda item contains the required data for this required review. The Producer Price Index, or PPI, adjustment beginning July 1, 2015 is 5.25%. A narrative report is attached outlining the required information that will also be shared with Clark County. And I'll turn this over to our Director of Finance, Mark Trastall, to present.
Thank you, MJ. We'll start out talking about the contracts that have been awarded. We've had 97 contracts awarded as of March 31st, and these numbers as of March 31st, a lot of you have already seen those. The next slide, of those 97 contracts, there are 61 that have been awarded to local small businesses. And the value of those contracts is $208 million, which will account for about 2,692 jobs. Some of the recent projects that we've kicked off for RTC-managed FRA construction projects are to follow. The Flamingo Corridor Improvements, that start, that was on March 10th, and construction has started on that. That's a $43 million project. The I-11 project, which we kicked off just a month after that, broke ground, and that's the first phase of I-11. And the most recent groundbreaking took place on June 2nd for the City of Henderson. This is related to the Stephanie Street project. It has a bridge. It's an $18.5 million project. That'll generate over 200 jobs. We'll now review the actual fuel tax indexing increase that will be effective on July 1 of 2015. This graph depicts the PPI annual increase and the 10-year rolling average. The historic producer price index rates are depicted by the blue line on this chart. As you can see, the change in PPI has been very volatile, except for the last three years. The PPI increase for calendar year 2014 was 0.5%. The exact same is calendar year 13. You can see that on the end of the blue line to the right. 2012 was 1.7%. The historic 10-year rolling average PPI is depicted by the yellow line. As you can see, using a 10-year rolling average removes much of the volatility of the PPI. The 10-year rolling average PPI rate for calendar year 2014 is 5.25%. It is the 5.25% that is used to calculate the adjustment to the indexed fuel tax rate that will be effective on July 1 of 2015. These next charts show a history of the increase in the indexed fuel tax. You can see that was 3.25 cents for gasoline, and then we show the increases for special fuels after that. In 2014, last year, July 1 of 2014, the little green bars show the increase that happened last year. And then finally, the topic of today's meeting is the yellow bars, which will show the increase that will happen in a few weeks on July 1. You can see gasoline will go up a little over 3 cents. Our next chart shows the history of that cumulative tax. We will now be at 9.7 cents from the 6.6 cents that's currently effective. This next chart shows what we've collected, actually collected, in indexed fuel tax. You can see for fiscal 14, we collected $12.7 million. Through February of 15, we collect, we have collected 34.9, for a total of $47.7 million collected so far. The next chart shows what we are projecting to collect compared to what we have collected. In 14, again, we collected $12.7 million. And in fiscal 15, we anticipate collecting almost $50 million. And in fiscal 16... And in fiscal sixteen, we are budgeting almost $75 million in collections on the indexed fuel tax. As of May twenty-seventh of 2015, we have actual expenditures of over $102 million. We've spent over $102 million on projects so far. And that concludes my prepared comments. I'd be glad to answer any questions the commission might have.
Comments or questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, your next item, item number fifty, is to conduct your second and final citizens' participation period.
This is the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, first up, Mr. Dennis Hennessy.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. Last month, I was here telling you about a driver who literally saved my life when I was having heart issues on the bus. Thank you for contacting him. I was here on the Thursday, the next day, Mr. Pittman kept his word and congratulated the driver and did all the appropriate things, so thank you all for that. This morning, I just want to tell you briefly, I ride the paratransit a lot, and this, you all know my story. Your drivers are so amazing. I'm not going to use any names of passengers. There's a young woman on the bus who was born perfectly healthy. She was hit by a car, left for dead. She is now a paratransit rider. A young man who doesn't speak, but when you say hello to him, he turns his head near direction, and he waves. A young girl who works at Studio Eight downtown, she's able to work. She also attends Helen Stewart School. She can't tell you her address or where she lives, but she knows that that's where she works, and we know each other because I happen to shop at Studio Eight, little Christmas cards and what have you. She carries in her backpack pictures of her family, of her new baby niece, of her dog. There's an older woman who is picked up from the Lead Adult Daycare, and these people I just meet on my route. I've been six and a half years, so I see them, I don't see them. She's new to me, but she gets on the bus, and it must be new for her to go to the adult daycare. She's in sort of that land that I guess we just all call dementia. And she will say to the driver, whatever the driver is, male, female, colors, "Are you sure you know where you're going? My son-in-law is going to wait for me. Are you sure? Are you sure?" There's another woman who's in a wheelchair and rather unintelligible, and yet the drivers always get her to where she's supposed to go. I've seen parents stay on their driveway until they can no longer see the bus, because your drivers have their most precious cargo, their children. So you not only service me, for which I'm grateful, but you service this myriad of people that I've been blessed to meet and see and share. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Hennessy.
Welcome back, Commissioner Brown. We missed you last month. First item, I want to thank Commissioner G. I think I want to thank you. As I left the podium last month on my tirade about our pesticide issue, I believe I heard you say you were sorry. I'm not sure, but I think you said, Dennis, we're sorry. And sure enough, like she ran her report up front, Darcy Spears ran another report, and it was amazing. A day and a half after that report ran, I went back to work, because I had the next day off, and there was a posted letter from OSHA and a posted letter from the Keolos Safety Department. So Darcy created action, right? Thank you for your apology. It sure would have been nice if the members, and again, the management team, I respect greatly at Keolos. I don't think any higher more of Kevin and Francis, but not once has anybody from my own company walked out into that driver's lounge and apologized that we were put in those situations. That being said, for a year now, I've talked to you people about inspect what you expect. There are members of your staff that are absolutely fantastic at inspecting what they expect. MJ and her staff with the tackling of the security issues that we had a year ago, the new doors that are being tested on, there's some great inspection of expectations. Ramona Harramio, who handles the ambassadors on the strip. You want to talk about somebody who inspects what she expects? That's the person in your staff that does it. Now I want to talk about the cleanliness of the buses for a year. You sat here and listened. I called it last month hogwash from Silver State, whether they're not getting enough money, trickled down to get these buses cleaned. It took Darcy Spears to come out and expose the pesticides. Well, Darcy's not going away. She does a little tidbit called dirty dining. She was real interested in my old gig, which was dirty driving. Darcy's not going away. I don't believe you have anybody in quality control for the quality of these buses, but if you do, they need to spend some quality time with Ramona to learn how to inspect what they expect. If you don't have a quality control person, I'll volunteer. You can hire me. I'll volunteer, and trust me, these buses will look better than what they look now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Good morning, commissioners. Jose Mendoza Jr., President for RTU Local sixteen thirty-seven. Just to give you a brief update on regarding the negotiations that have been ongoing for the past two years since you guys decided to split the yards, I do want to personally thank Keolos for not imposing the rejected CBA that was voted on April twenty-fifth. They went back on the table and corrected the problem where there was a misunderstanding on the table. I do appreciate that, and now that it has been corrected, we are going to take a vote this Saturday on June thirteenth, which I strongly believe that it is going to be ratified. So I do thank Keolos on that part for not imposing the contract that was rejected. Now it's for MV. MV right now is a stance, we're just a couple of words away from hopefully selecting an arbitrator for interest-binding arbitration as to what's going to happen. In the end, we hope that we prevail on our arguments on to the arbitrator, and if not, we'll deal with what we got to deal. But again, this is only the beginning of the end. After this, next year, I did tell our members to let's regroup and see what happens during this process of these contracts, what they're being implemented and enforced, and if things change for the better, then perhaps you won't see us that many times here. And we hope we don't have to be here that many times. And I do hope that you, the RTC staff and commissioners, encourage these employers that we're human beings, and we deserve a decent wage and living, just like the RTC staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board this morning? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment. This meeting is adjourned.